Oh, have a nice little.
My next door neighbor's already one day. We're gonna have a toast. Oh, wait, it's Tuesday.
Yes.
Well, you can always toast to Tuesday.
We did.
And that year later, everything's gone up in price. Back then, they're gonna pay.
Extinction brothers.
No, they're saying no.
And spouses.
No.
Since she went on her family, he's your brother. I was not very well.
Okay. Clock on the button.
Perfect.
I would, I would win.
Man, I'm.
Three score and make sure. Nobody else is on here.
By virtue of my profession. It's just a crack against me. Well, you see me, the officer. I mean, I, if I don't have court. I don't have.
No, no, you have.
Bastard on my feet.
Ready? All right. Good evening. Long way to call the Senator City Council meeting order for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Would everyone in attendance please rise and join me in a pledge of leave? Pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Josie, will you lead us in prayer?
Sure.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this opportunity to be servants to the city. Lord Jesus, we ask for discernment and direction as we're making decisions this night. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the employees of the city and ask a special blessing over them and protect them as well, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yeah.
Justin Cowger. Keith Higgins. Josie Reed.
Yes.
Darren Warren is not here this evening, and Mr. Ealem is on. Thank you.
And Matt, Matt Thompson's here too on Zoom.
Hello, Matt.
All right. So first on the agenda is accepting the city council meeting minutes from October tenth and October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, they've been in your Dropbox here for a little bit, so hope you all had a chance to read them with that. Would someone like to make motion to approve those minutes?
Someone.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, next is receipt of the Senator Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes for September nineteenth and a special meeting on October fifth. Uh, the planning commission meeting minutes for October third and October seventeenth, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. I'm gonna make a motion to acknowledge receipt.
Make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next is, uh, our financial report. I'm gonna ask Shannon to join us.
Good evening. So we are eighty-three percent of the way through the year, thankfully. Um, so obviously, our revenue should be at eighty-three percent above. Our expenditure should be eighty-three percent below. So right now, we're currently sitting at ninety percent for our revenue, so we're sitting really well with our revenue. Our expenditures, we are at eighty-four percent. We're just a little tiny over, but it's also because of certain purchases we made that you guys approved, like the PD vehicles. Um, also, we received a payment for providing ambulance services in Florida due to the hurricanes, and we did receive seventy-six thousand dollars for that.
Wow, great.
That was pretty awesome. Um, as far as our ambulance services, um, for the month of October, it was a little bit low. Um, we did receive thirty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That will increase. Again, when I talk to them, it's though because of Medicaid and Medicare. Usually get a lot of denials with that, and then they have to kind of fight those ones, so. Does anyone have any questions?
For the seventy-six thousand that we got, is that after extensive checking?
Um. I believe so. I think they took out whatever. Yeah, I think that was, I'll look on that, cuz I don't, I didn't get to see the paperwork for it, but I'll look on that and then I'll send you an email for it.
Sounds good.
You're asking if it's like an upside of seventy-six thousand, like with everything taken out?
Yes.
Yeah, cuz they were supposed to cover everything.
Cuz how did the?
That's what I thought, and their hotel, their food, everything is what I understood as well. Yeah.
Cuz how did the rooms and stuff, how was that? Was it billed or is it free?
They didn't stay in rooms. I believe they stayed in like a, I think it was like a gymnasium or something.
Free?
Um, I believe so, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we had to pay for the fuel for them to get down to Florida, and we had to pay for the fuel for them to get back. Um, everything else was pretty well covered. They stayed in FEMA housing and different fire stations throughout Florida while they were down there for their fifteen days.
Thanks for that. Anyone else? Thank you.
Right, so would someone like to make motion to accept the, uh, financial report and also the court report, which was attached?
So, uh.
We got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? You wanna pose? Trying to get to link to Darren. Darren's gonna join by Zoom also. All right, next, uh, is department reports, and they're in the Dropbox. I do wanna say, I wanted to acknowledge, as you all come in, I hope you seen the lights, uh, on the building and also on this building. I wanna commend our Public Works and our Parks and Recreation Departments for working several days over here, lighting this place up. It looks good.
And then didn't they do City Park?
They're in the process of doing that, yes.
Yeah, it's looking good.
Yeah, they're in the process. Does anybody got anything, questions on department reports? All right, next is public comment. So if anybody would like to address the council, Cindy, uh, you have any public comment for us? Okay. Is anyone else has any public comments before I go through my spiel? All right. Okay, so next will be ordinances and resolutions. So before we start, would someone like to make motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy? Resolution twenty twenty-three to forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four by title.
Amen.
And a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Justin Cowger. Keith Higgins. Josie Reed.
Yes.
Are you there, Darren Warren?
Wait a minute.
Yeah?
He's there, I just gotta laugh. Okay, now you can talk to him.
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Ealem.
Yes.
If someone like to make a motion to suspend a rule requiring a read on three separate occasions, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy.
I'm moved.
There are a motion, we have a second? Okay, roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Justin Cowger. Keith Higgins. Josie Reed.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
And Mr. Ealem.
Yes.
All right, so our first ordinance is twenty twenty-three dash sixty-eight. Uh, this is rezoned property belonging to, if I get back to it. Hang on, man, I messed up. Okay. This is a property belonging to, uh, Gargo. And this is over on the, on the south side of town off Huber Road. I'll show you a map where's that. There it is, right there. Uh, this is south of Huber Road and, uh, east of Ty Kuno. Sorry, I couldn't see it, there's that red line in there. Uh, the property next to it is Zoned R one, and then property just to the south is R three duplex and also R three single family. And looking on the land map, uh, it is compatible with the land use plan. Uh, this was heard at the last pub council. The last planning meeting on November seventh. Uh, there's one resident who did come and speak in opposition of it. Not opposition, just had concerns. He was concerned with screening when they put this in. Uh, and also just with traffic and, and the road being paved, cuz it is a dirt road.
What was the first, he was concerned with what?
Track screening, screening, yeah. Between his property, his property backs up to it. So, uh, and, and the property owners are here, actually, they took him outside after the meeting and they've talked to him, so uh, apparently, they, they've talked about that, talked about his concerns already. Uh, this is three point three three acres. Uh, the applicant, when he came, said he was gonna put twelve lots here. And it's all it can fit on there, so with that, the planning commission, uh, did approve unanimously for city council consideration.
How many acres did you say?
Three point three three. Be twelve lots. Four, a little, four per acre. All right, anybody got any questions? Counselor.
CM Sergeant, ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash six eight. Norance to rezon certain land belonging to Eduardo Rivera, located in the city of Centerton, section zero seven, township nineteen north, range thirty-one west of Benton County, Arkansas, from agricultural A one to medium-high density residential, single-family, R three SF.
Someone like to make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-eight?
Amen.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette. Justin Cowger. Keith Higgins.
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
And Mr. Ealem.
Yes.
All right, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine. This is vacation, vacating a portion of the drainage and utility. He's been all lot twenty-seven in the Versailles subdivision. Uh, this one does require a public hearing, so at this time, someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Okay, all in favor? Any wanna pose? All right, this time, uh, we will conduct a public hearing for this property. Is anyone like to address the council on this? Once? Twice? Okay, public hearing's closed. All right, so back, back where we were. This what? This is actually a ten, is a fifteen-foot side yard easement, and they wanna vacate ten foot of it. We've heard from all the utilities, there was no concerns.
We got a motion.
Sorry.
Was a public hearing? Yes.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anyone oppose? All right, back to where I was going, so uh, this, this is ten foot. And, uh, we heard from utilities, there is no utilities in here. I got the engineer, right? Engineers here, if we have any questions for him. Uh, planning commission did take a look at it, and they, they, uh, recommended to city council for approval.
It's way down there.
It's on the cul-de-sac down there.
Yeah.
Does anybody got any question? And this isn't a Versailles subdivision, by the way, sorry about that, lot twenty-seven, which is also fourteen hundred Le Chesney Drive. All right, counselor.
CM Sergeant, ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash six nine. Ordinance vacating a portion of the west ten feet of the fifteen-foot side yard public utility and drainage easement located along the west property line of lot twenty-seven in the Versailles subdivision, city of Centerton, as shown on flat record book two thousand six, page nine nine seven, Benton County, Arkansas, also known as fourteen hundred, uh, Le Chesney Drive.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine?
Amen.
We have a motion, we have a second? Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Keith Higgins. Josie Reed.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Ealem.
Yes.
All right, this next ordinance is twenty twenty-three dash seventy. This is updating the schedule fees, deposits, and other charges for the Centerton Water and Sewer Department. And I've asked, uh, Representative Bob Erickson, can you kind of go over this with us?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm very happy to be here. Uh, I'll begin this by telling you how this, why these changes have occurred. Um, first of all, our wholesale supplier, uh, Benton Washington County, Benton Washington Regional Water Authority, announced earlier this year that they were gonna raise the wholesale rate forty cents per thousand gallons. In the course of our budgetary review that we began in early October, and as I met with the staff to begin that process, brought to our attention that to simply continue to pass on the forty cents as we have previous amounts uh, does not actually result in a negative. We have to charge more than just the forty cents. So after analyzing that, we determined that our calculation was that we need to, because, why do we need to charge? Because we're gonna have to buy more water than we're selling. And I'll talk about that in just a moment. Anyway, so we came up with it, we calculated what that cost might be for buying water that we're not selling. That's another thirteen cents per thousand. So we've put together a rate that would increase our rates by fifty-three cents per thousand. Now, you're gonna ask about why do we buy water that we're not selling? Well, it's a sad fact. Water losses are like a thousand cuts. And they, they are just literally thousands of little tiny leaks all over. Oh, we'll occasionally find a really big leak, and we'll fix that. However, we have spent considerable resources over the years trying to attack these. And eighteen months ago, the staff came to me and proposed as the treasurer, they flew things by me first. After analyzing this, and I asked for further prioritization, further information, what we did was we quantified what it would take to begin really attacking the thousand cuts. As a result, in two thousand twenty-four, we are going to add a crew of three personnel, three, three operators, and equipment to begin attacking the thousand cuts. They are also going to begin attacking our highest priority area for water losses.
What's that?
Tamaron subdivision.
Really?
So.
Is this what you spoke about?
Last number.
With the mayor.
Staff has identified that we are, that about ninety percent of all of the service line connections are leaking.
Imagine, because of the age of that subdivision, that just.
Same thing, it's just age and and type of material that was used. Okay? So that's their highest priority. That's where they're gonna start, as soon as we got people on staff and equipment. We are even then, we're going to, because some of those lines are buried so deeply, we're gonna end up contracting out small portions. There's gonna be a systematic approach uh, to attack that. I'll still be available to the other. We've got to attack that.
Is that why we're asking for the increase in water?
Yeah, that's where the thirteen cents comes from. A part of it, Tamaron's really part of it. We got some other places that are, okay. I'm not gonna make an exception, but there are some facts, I think, there are some things occurred in the past that we believe that we've done saw that problem.
There's nowhere else to get that money except for raising the water on the citizens of Centerton.
Yeah, that's true.
High water already and.
I, I understand that, but we're trying our best to keep the rates down and there's also one other little thing that I got to talk to, come to this, I got to.
Can you break that down, though, before you go on to the other thing? Can you break that down in terms of what will this be on the average household increase?
Oh, about, um.
Per thousand?
Dollar and about a dollar and let's see, per thousand, three, three thousand, yeah. About a dollar and forty-five cents a month.
Bill?
About a dollar and forty-five cents a month, yeah.
When was the last time we raised prices?
Last year.
A dollar twenty-five a bill.
About a dollar and twenty-five cents a bill, just for the water rate.
Okay, water rate, but it's been, when was, when was the last rate increase?
Last year.
Before that one. It's been several years.
Three years. Yeah, please, please understand. In two thousand twenty-one, the legislature passed something called Act six oh five. There are a number of things. One is that it's, for the very first time, it specified that water utilities have to conduct rate studies.
Yeah, I remember you saying that.
Okay? And, and there's such specific things that have to be done. You can't go longer than five years without one, and before you undertake any major capital expenditure, you have to have a rate study. Okay? Now, but there's, and there's some other things that are in here, but one of the things is, a little clause that says, basically, you can't come up with a budget that ends up in a negative number. When we start trying to budget, we've got to try to make sure we got enough revenue coming in, or we control our expenses, so that we don't budget a negative number. Okay?
Is there was this not gonna be popular, but is there was offsets by increasing developer rate?
Oh, we're already working on those, those, but those are based on future costs. Okay? Yes. They're gonna, we'll probably get back in here shortly after the first year for, uh, for capacity fee increases. Okay?
So this is Darren, I've got a question. What's the percentage of loss that we have right now, and how long has this been going on?
Really, really good, seventeen percent.
So we're probably just a little bit above the average from the last time. So we've got thirty-five percent loss, or did you say seventeen percent loss of the water coming into the city?
Range is between seventeen and thirty-five percent, depending on the time of the year, what the weather is, you know, all these sorts of things. We've been, we've spent well over, you know, we've spent well over forty million dollars in the last fifteen years.
We have one of the newer systems too. Why's that happening? Like a spring, why's that happening to us?
Well, we have a rural water system.
What?
Rural water system.
Rule?
Rule.
Sorry.
Uh, country, we're into the rule?
We're, 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 I think, our goal is to try to get the. And when I lived in Bella Vista, okay, years, so I lived in Bella Vista, they were losing forty percent every month.
Their rates weren't as.
Darren is the hardest. Darren's.
But. Yeah, that answered my question. I figured anytime we probably got over ten percent, we should have already been tackling this issue before. You gotta come to us for a rate increase, now hire a crew just specifically to attack this water leakage, and, and I almost wonder if part of the issue is we have such a huge water service area. Uh, you know, lines just all over the place.
Well, the, uh, it is a lot of water. We have been trying, like I said, we've tried everything we can you know, spent a lot of money, the last ten years in particular, try to tackle the problem. The crew, I think, is going to pay for itself in the first year.
Let me ask you a question. You said you're gonna tackle Alamoor subdivision.
Tamaron.
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 Okay. Is that was, was it just for construction? I know that's a leading question. It's obvious if they use, use subcon or subpar.
I, I don't know, cuz I, I wasn't involved in, but I have to understand, Tamaron was built, it's set for a number of years.
Oh, that's right.
Empty.
Right.
And that doesn't do a water system any good at all.
Streets, water, anything.
You have, um, other subdivisions like that though, correct?
Yes.
And are they the same?
To some extent.
Thirty-five percent's a hell of a lot of loss, though. Like, what's that coming from? Like, just, I think, pipes leaking?
But the life of a thousand cuts.
But what's a, what's a surrounding city seeing on cuts?
Well, they're, they're all working on it too. I mean, they, they try to keep theirs down by only fifteen percent.
Right, but we're seventeen to thirty-five, it's a difference. So like, why is ours so bad?
What should we do?
So I, but is it right to pass it on to citizens before we know? Shouldn't we know?
We know, you know, we know where there's certain, you know, priority areas to attack. Okay?
Let's break that down, Tamaron. Are we saying it's leaking under houses? Like, what, what, what are we saying?
It's in the line that runs from the main to the meter.
It's not, it's not under the houses.
Not residential, it's like.
Not under the house.
We'll fix those. That's your problem. If you're the landowner.
It just seems like water.
We are, we are trying very, we have been trying very, very hard. The dig crew, I believe, now, looking at the numbers and what we expect, I think we're gonna, we're gonna face the dig crew this year.
Well, let me ask you a question. So Tamaron is what we're gonna address first. We've got other subdivisions in Centerton that may be similar to Tamaron. I know my subdivision sat for a while. So when we go to it's another subdivision, are we gonna have to raise the rates again?
Okay, so that's, we got to dig crew. We're working. We're working hard. Right, please. But, you know, we just can't, you know, that we're red.
It's better that the Water Commission fix it than we go to where we can't do a, stay in the, in the black and go into the red, and then the state takes it over, and they'll raise the rates a whole lot more than that.
We're trying our very best to, you know, solve the problem.
So, another question, and you may not know this. How do we prevent something like this happening at this extreme going forward?
Our aggressive inspection process during construction.
Has changed?
Has changed. We are much more, we actually have an entire inspection section and inspects all new construction. It's not a not just whoever we can find and time to go out there and look. They're out there continuously working at it, inspecting, making sure that the materials and the workmanship is accepted. It's up to standard. Okay? And I will say this. A lot of these things were before we ever established our book of standards. We were depending on strictless state plumbing code.
Sure. On what?
Say it again, we could.
Okay.
In here.
No, no, it's just the last part.
State plumbing.
State plumbing code, okay.
Okay. Years were right, all the, all in state plumbing code. And then about well over fifteen years ago, we adopted our own standards.
Yeah.
Okay? Tougher than one. But we're much more aggressive. It has taken a while.
So how long have we been running fifteen or seventeen to thirty-five that high?
More years.
So like Keith said, this was brought to us a couple of months ago, that it was possibly coming, but like why, and again, I'm not an expert, why did it take so long for this? Like, why, when we raised rates last year, why didn't we catch this? Where we did one versus now, we're kind of, we're eating an elephant one bite.
I'll, I'll tell you why, what, why didn't have, we didn't have CPA on staff.
When?
We hired CPA last year on staff.
Don't we have an audit?
Yeah. That's not what they audit for. You gotta, when we have a cert, we, we gotta search by a public accountant doing and overlooking our account, analyzing our business. John does a wonderful job. He's the one that really said, you know, look, this is where we go.
It's been for so long. But, but twenty years statement like that's, we have a commission, we, we want, we watch, you, you run your business twenty years, like how, how, why would it take so long? I.
Oh, well, staffing.
Yeah, but this hasn't even been mentioned until a couple of months ago. The, the, there was leak that bad. Is all, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
And, and I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers, like, twenty years.
It may be a fault of, that's, that's a fault of the commission.
And hey, listen, let's call it as it is. Amy's point, like, how do we avoid that in the future? Are we getting out now with this? Is that the right amount, so we don't have to come back next year and do this? Like, I just wanna make sure.
I, I don't know.
So, so in five years, we could possibly have three rate increases in the water.
I will tell you, you are going to have a rate increase every year for at least ten more years. Because wholesale rate is going to go up every year for the next ten years. Okay, because the wholesaler is undergoing meet the demands for water. Has over a, has almost a two hundred million, I think it's two hundred, it's well over a hundred million. Well over a hundred million dollar uh program to increase its production capacity, to increase its distribution capacity.
So with Centerton growing the way it is, and over the next couple of years, we know it's just gonna keep on going. Is that gonna be worse? Like, is the wholesaler gonna keep raising his rates then because?
We're
It's not just us.
The wholesaler has already announced to its members. Okay? What the rate increases are going to be for at least the next three years.
Well, I wish we could, yeah, I wish there was something else that we sort of the citizen doesn't have to
Pay for
Pay for that, like how do we, is there a way we can counterbalance that? Maybe compromise some way where we're not constantly having
We want adequate
Not only that, but we've got a, a millage vote coming up for Bentonville School. So that's something else. Citizens here in Van County are gonna have to probably incur, incur. So how do we compromise maybe somehow?
If you want water.
It's either a yes or a no.
City is a member of the Two-Tone Authority. Okay, has its P Ridge, Grabit, Centri.
And they're raising their rates too?
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 the cities are raising their rates too?
Absolutely. Because every one of the members, they're not like us, they can't, they can't suck it up.
So we can't offset by raising like an impact fee with developers? Why?
Because it's not our construction. Wholesale suppliers construction.
I understand, but how can we not have a fee, an impact fee that's, that's
Not what the law allows. The law says whatever our needs as an entity are. The only thing that's eligible for impact fees.
Didn't, didn't the Beaver Water Authority also announce just recently that they're fixing to have to extend their intake and uh
Beaver Water
ba- bigger and so, I mean
It's going through the same.
Everybody, it's not just not Two-Tone.
The big four are gonna have to pay for that. Bentonville Rogers, Springdale, Bevel, they're gonna have to pay for that.
Well, yeah.
Why are they so high though compared to the surrounding?
Where we get our water?
Well, we, no, actually, we're actually cheaper than, I mean, the water we're getting is cheaper than
I must have a leak because mine's extremely high.
But
Scott's doing it.
Yeah, we better check.
I don't, I don't respect, but, but Springdale is under Springdale, Bevel, Bentonville, Rogers have parts of their system that are over a hundred years old.
Yeah, but they have a hell of a lot of revenue too in this city.
They're a lot bigger than we are.
They are, but you gotta get there somehow.
They built, and then when they built their systems that they got, they got a lot of cheap federal money. They got government grants and cheap money.
How do we get government grants?
Didn't
Yeah, how do we get government grants?
We don't fault that because our income level is too high.
What's it, but Springdale isn't?
What?
But Springdale isn't?
No, no, I didn't say, they built their systems with cheap money and grants.
So you're saying the amount of people that live here, the income is too high? Is that what you're saying? City, city, okay. Well, I've been saying that for a while, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I will tell you that. I came, I came to Centerton as a consultant back in oh, let's see, nineteen eighty-eight.
Few years ago.
They wanted me to uh help him get a grant to build a water tower. I had to, I had, had to tell Sherman, I said, I'm sorry, Sherman. You can't get a grant. Your income levels are too high.
Well, hopefully, Amy, if we go from a thirty-five percent water loss down to fifteen percent, then maybe we're not spending a bunch of money on water that's just going into the ground and maybe that'll keep us from having to do another rate increase.
Yeah.
You said we're gonna have a weight rate increase every year for the next ten years, no matter what.
Wholesale supplier is gonna increase. But if we can improve our watering
Efficiency?
Efficiency. You know, reduce unaccountable loss. That will reduce the amount of impacting that we have to try, you know.
Is that something that in the monthly report, when we have the council packets, we could like get an update on that, like where we're trending? Like, I don't know what the timeframe is on this, but can we get a timeframe like where it's measuring? Yeah, but like with this exact example of like where it's going.
Yeah, all these statistics are in that report every month.
But I'm saying this, this is an example, the thirty-five to, let's say we bring it down to fifteen, like can we, can we quantify that maybe?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't understand.
If you look at the minutes, the minutes of our meeting, those attachments included a system statistic reports that show all of this data.
Yeah, but digging through, I'm just talking, just
We're not experts in water, so we're, we need you to explain it.
Except for very plainly, whole section, little section on the system statistics. It says water, unaccountable water loss. That's what the percentage is and gallons.
It'd be nice to understand where, let's say we go from thirty-five to twenty-seven, where did that happen? What, what did we find? Like, I, I mean
I, as we, as we attack it, we'll be
Yeah, I, I know it's something overnight, but I think it's yours.
Okay. Also like to point out that there were two other things that came out of the in the staff drafting of the budget that uh resulted in some changes in fees. One is the meter replacement fee. Which we raised two dollars per month. That is because the cost of meters have gone up. And the expected life at a dollar. We could not recover the cost in uh, anywhere close to the expected life. So at three dollars a month, we're very close to being able to recover the cost of replacing a meter.
And that's on top of the water.
That's four twenty-five so far.
Yeah. That's all the customers will see directly.
Four twenty-five. I mean, you're talking about average household.
Yeah, about
Girls, so a lot of showers in my house. I don't know if that's average household.
Every other day.
Yeah, okay. Then
Under ration.
Let's go to Splashpad in the summer.
Join, join the gym, join the gym. Yeah, you have a lot of faucets, and you have flow uh
a lot of water here.
All your faucets uh set uh low flow?
I don't know where that's happened. I can tell you right now, my bathroom is not flowing.
Every faucet in my house should have flow restrictor in it.
I, I mean, I've, I've done blown ears, it's a, there's one bathroom, it's it's a
You put a flow restrictor in it, it reduces the flow, but it does not necessarily make you think flow is in
Yeah, I don't know.
If you'd like me to, I'd be more than happy to come and give my water conservation talk and show you all my work and things that I've gathered up over the years uh, to show people how they can be, you know, conserve water.
Flush your toilet all the time.
Yeah.
I'll be outside.
Now, uh the, all right, there was one other thing. We did institute a new fee because we discovered that uh we did away with something that we didn't do. So now we're gonna have to reset. And we've been having problems with new construction inspections and getting things happen at new construction. And there'll be an inspection and they'll say, yeah, everything fine. And then you come back and then change the grades and you know, all that other stuff. But we didn't have, we weren't covering the cost of the new meter. And so we instituted a new fee called new construction meter inspection fee. Three hundred and twenty-five dollars, which will be levied on every new connection to the system.
That covers the cost?
Covers the cost of the meter and offsets the portion of our inspection cost.
So, okay, so we're not running neutral, we're not running negative, but we, it's, okay, we're covering.
We're gonna try to, try to do that.
More bucks was that, Bob? How much?
Three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
How does that rate compare to what, like Benton?
I don't know what the others, this is charged. We were covering that in, in what we call the right to water fee. When we went to the capacity fees, we dropped the right to water fee and we picked it up until John got looking at the numbers and said, you know, how did we pay for all these meters? And John says, yeah, so the accountant is basically pointed out to us. We have to prove Mission has undertaken these changes, we want it like, but of necessity. And but we will try to do a better job of communicating to the council.
You have a CPA full time now?
Absolutely.
Right. I missed it.
He does a really good job. You know, he talked about anything on here, cause you all raised deposits too. Well, okay.
There's a tax, there is a tax in the order.
Yeah, this is a tax order. This is a three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's a separate paragraph in the words. Next page.
There's a next page. And you said there's four dollars?
There is a next page, okay.
Okay, in city, out of city commercial.
Again, that's on the bill, not per thousand?
Per thousand.
How much does the average household use a month?
About three thousand gallons.
Okay, so it's actually twelve sixty per household then?
No, the rate will go up fifty-three cents. For three thousand, I guess, just got it, dollar man.
Right there, it says four twenty per thousand gallons. You said the average house uses three thousand, so wouldn't you
That's a new rate of five dollars and eighty-three cents per thousand.
Right.
Right, at fifty-three cents more.
That was before.
Okay.
Oh, okay, the second part's commercial down below, okay.
That's commercial. Correct.
But if it's fifty cents a thousand. Yeah, so like maybe a buck fifty.
And then, um, a little
Okay.
Oh, maybe replacement fee.
Yeah, meter, and that's on residential.
That's residential.
That's four about Just under five bucks in average house.
We're doing our best to try to keep these rates down.
I got a question for you.
Okay.
This, this let's get, let's get creative here. How, how much for the Centerton Water Authority do we print paper bills for?
How much?
So let me go, let me go different. Can we offset some of this? If people, if people go to write billing, but also the payment service we use sucks. It's, it's like four dollars a bill. So why can't we not change it, offset this by direct instead of outsourcing and save the residents some money? I, I'm telling you right now, a hundred and fifty dollar bill, it's ridiculous paying additional few dollars. Like, let's offset it for the residents. So
Well, I, I
Fine.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you.
It's about being a
State law does not allow us to do that.
Then you know what? Let's, let's find another way to offset it. I mean, is my solution?
What about, okay.
Now, if you do, if you
Bill, can we
You reduce paper
So people are more likely to pay online and not pay a fee?
Yeah, what about, over thirty percent of our bills are paid online.
But you pay a fee.
But they're paying a fee, what I'm saying, to save
Okay, are you paying by credit card or by bank draft?
By draft. Now, I mean, I've, I've paid credit card and passed for those fees, but what I'm saying is why can't we credit a customer? You're saving less money, you're saving money by not printing a bill. So just going online, they should see a benefit and they're saving you money by paying online. Why would we not help pass along? What does it take?
I'm afraid we have to issue a bill.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
That's not what he's saying though.
We have to issue a printed bill.
We don't, I don't get a paper bill. Mine's online.
Did you opt out of it, maybe?
No, I opt, I opt into my email. That's how I get my bill. So
No, I just got an email.
Okay, well, if they wanna save five dollars, you sure as heck are gonna find one. I'm just saying, how much do you spend printing a bill per month for the city of Centerton? Do we know?
I'll have to go look because the billing company presents, you know, notes the bills and pays the postage and
But if we have a CPA, they sure as heck should be involved in that. If it costs four thousand dollars, and I don't know how it would cost, to print bills and somebody goes online, like, we should give them the benefit of that. They're not making you print the bill, you're not paying postage for it, like, why not?
Okay, I'm not certain that we cannot issue a paper bill.
I don't get one and I haven't for five years.
For everybody.
I, I understand, they can, but, but you know what? Maybe in their next bill, hey, if you wanna save the water increase, offset it, get an email. And I'm pretty sure if you don't have an email at this point, everything on your phone, you have to have email. But if, if you're gonna save five dollars, why not? I mean, educate them. Hey, look, you can save five dollars.
All right, we'll investigate.
All we're trying to do is just help offset some of the costs. We, every meeting, we come in here and we talk about how everything's going up in the world, right? We're just trying to help our, our citizens here to offset some of these. I understand what Justin's saying. I'm also saying if you wanna pay your bill online, there is a fee that someone has to pay. I don't do it because I don't wanna pay an extra ten bucks to pay online.
If you do your bank account.
I like to
But, 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 but I, I get, but I, I, I would like to know, like
I mean, we're just trying to be creative on
I, I can, I'm having real hard things about this four dollars.
No, no, let me, let me say it this way. AT&T phone bill. If I do auto bill and e-bill, I get a discount. Our best, if I do my banking online and I don't have them send me paper statements. And I pay a car note through their uh, direct deposit or whatever. I save a, a fourth of a percentage point, whatever. I'm saying if we're not printing
I, I will, I will tell you this. We cannot give discounts.
No, listen, you're not hearing me. Listen, listen, if, if you are not printing a bill on paper, you are saving that money. So you, you find a way to neutralize that rate increase. There's no way that that's illegal. If, if you're saving money
We'll go back, okay. I will, I'll go back and we'll talk to the staff.
Now The cost for a piece of paper too may be nothing.
Okay, what's the cost, what's the, what's the cost?
We'll examine.
Yeah, look it up with all those numbers on us right now.
Okay, I, I will
Trying to think ahead for our citizens instead of always saying, let's just raise it currently, like, what's the solution?
We're not actually raising the rate, it's our water provider. We have raised the rate with the thirteen cents, she has the, since it's not us, it's Two-Tone, the last two or three increases have been Two-Tone.
Totally, it hasn't been us at all. Totally agree, totally agree. That's not what I'm saying. So, that's all I'm saying, so. Residents doesn't care about that. They care that their bill increases. And I'm trying to say, let's find a solution for them to offset that. I get
I think what would be helpful, um, you guys talk about these things in your, in your commission meetings, but most of these folks have day jobs and, and can't attend those meetings, is maybe bring something from the Water Authority where they're showing that, just as kind of a backup for these guys who, who have to speak to the citizens.
I will go back, I'll talk to the staff, Malcolm. And we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, and it's just like, it's colored, it's perforated, there's gotta be a way to save money.
I'll report back to you.
Okay, we're just trying to help, right? We don't have to be
I understand.
Yes, it's, we're just trying to see if there's different ways, if there's, you know, things that we can help, right? I mean, that's that's what we, we're trying to do, right?
I understand what you're trying to get to. And please understand, we don't necessarily consent the rules.
Absolutely.
Law sometimes binds our heart.
Yeah, right. But, but we know that there's, there is, I mean, otherwise this wouldn't be up for a vote, right? You guys would just do it and we'd be off and right? So we're, that's why we're just trying to, what's the best way to get it done?
We, we will go back and we will look at it and I'll make sure that we communicate to you what we're doing, okay?
Okay. Ask a couple of questions, please. On, um so the citizens are gonna have a fit, we know this. What is, what is the answer to them if, let's say we do not pass this tonight? What is the outcome from that?
Well, it was Ask, you know, pass this.
Yeah.
What's the result?
If you don't pass this, uh, technically, we're gonna, we, we're gonna create a violation of that six oh five of two thousand twenty-one because our budget will be out of balance.
Okay. State gets involved, is that correct?
That's a
We're getting involved. So why are we having a vote on this then? It sounds like we have to vote, vote yes.
Because they can't just do it without counsel.
Right. So, we want this on the record, then we have to vote yes. Otherwise, we're gonna be in violation. I don't understand that. That does not make sense. We're a violation because we didn't. Yeah, we didn't manage this a few years ago, or from what I'm hearing, I don't understand.
Okay. These were forwarded to you to be included in the city code. And the ordinance that created.
Years.
Water and sewer commit, the water and sewer commission. The commission. The commission. Sets rates for services and fees. For water. We set.
Right.
The rates and fees for water. We forwarded this to you to enact, to include in the city code. And that's simply all that we've done.
And.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to add for?
But if we, if we, from a financial standpoint, we don't have to raise fees, is what I think you're trying to say. Technically, we could, but.
But if their budget shows a negative, then.
But, yeah, no, but if the state gets more, what, what's that look like? Because my question is, like, he just said.
A raise.
Hasn't been caught.
Right.
That's a problem. We don't have CPA, how does that happen for twenty years? I'm saying, that's, that's, so, so now it's our residents' fault because we didn't catch them for twenty years. I don't like that.
Well, it could have been raised every year for twenty years.
One hundred percent, but now that it's been twenty years of leaks, and thirty-five percent.
But you went twenty years without a raise. So.
And two in the last year.
Okay.
Well, it's good for the first time.
The residents that have been here for that long have reaped benefits of it. And the city has, has dealt with the. Cut and cutting this and that. To not raise the rates.
But if you catch those leaks and attack them earlier, this doesn't happen. Potentially.
Well, it's not, it's not just from the leaks, right?
No, no, I'm saying that doesn't help.
We ate, I know that we've, and this is before your time. We ate. All of the two-ton raises for several years.
Yep.
Instead of, instead of passing them on, we ate. The cost of the race. And now. The act. That the state passed. You cannot eat them anymore. Every time. From, from now till eternity. If two-ton gives us a rate increase. We have to pass that on. If the sewer. Rate goes up from Decatur, we have to pass that along. Am I not correct? That's all part of the act.
When did that, what, Act six oh five state? When did that get passed?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, thank you.
I do one every five years or the other improvement project. Twenty percent of your operating budget, you have to do one, so.
Get what you're saying. I, I just think being solution-oriented for the residents is obviously our job. Like, I, I think. If we can save money, like.
And we.
I get the legality of.
Tried that for years with two-ton and growth helped us with that, but we're at the point now where growth can't. Overcome up with the money we need to do improvements like a brand-new one.
I've said so down the road since I went myself, like.
So.
Well, yeah, I mean.
We're just throwing rocks up and left and right.
Did we, have we ever had a, um, surplus? Do, do you guys like have a surplus in your budget ever? Yeah?
We do have a surplus, but we try to keep it at a certain number in case something goes wrong, we can dip out of that. We try not to, we try to keep a decent amount in there, but.
Okay.
As recently as ten years ago. Well, I'll, I'll tell you this. When I came on Water and Sewer Commission, you know what our number one worry was? We're gonna have money, enough money in the bank to pay the bills and pay our employees. That was, yeah, when I first came on the commission, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty.
Two thousand.
You say on nineteen twenty.
I gave on. And we had two employees. And we worried about paying our employees and paying our bills. And over the years, we have very carefully budgeted, we have fully funded our, our. Depreciation. Uh, and we have built up. A. Uh, reserve. Which has allowed us to do certain improvements. And, uh. Yeah. Talk about what one of them was. Walmart wanted to build a. New Center to Boulevard. They had to have access to water and sewer. We took money out of our reserve and built the water line. And we showed it to the sewer, sewer connection is already there, but we built the water line that that neighborhood market could be built. Current debt with our self, as the first project we ever sold.
And that's great. What I'm just trying to say is, I don't know if legally, if there's any way that. That could be used to offset some, instead of fifty-three cents, maybe it's a quarter, I don't know. I'm just thinking, right? Just trying to think outside the box.
Sounds to me like there's a forty cent increase.
Fifty-three percent.
That's, that's a.
Fifty-three cents.
There's a forty cent increase from the supplier, period. That's a real number.
Right.
The thirteen cents is water bought, bought not sold. That's the, that's the number that you're trying to bite into by doing repairs to your system, that's the thirteen cent. Forty is, is forty.
But as a ci- as a city, it's. Wouldn't we want to try and help offset some of these water costs because they're gonna go up every single year? So we're just telling our citizens. Sorry, if you don't like it, I guess, move, I mean.
Bring it from thirty-five down to fifteen, I think we're saying it will fund that in an indirect way. Because you wouldn't have to raise rates, because you, you save your.
We can reduce unaccountable water.
Saving you.
But we're gonna raise it every, every year because the wholesaler is raising it.
Yeah, but if we can reduce the unaccountable water loss, we can mitigate some of that rate increases.
Sorry, let me rephrase that in terms, if we can reduce the water bought not used.
Yeah.
That pays for.
It starts to.
Yeah, that's thirteen cents, which would make it not as bad to the customer.
Okay, let me put it this way. Okay, so the wholesaler raises rates on us, fine, we're pass that on, that's just how it is. Can we eat that thirteen cents then? Can you eat that with your budget, that thirteen cents? Because if something that happened years ago, because we didn't have things in the right place, we didn't have CPA, we didn't see all that. That's just no.
We're.
You still gotta fund the.
We, I still gotta fund something for unaccountable water.
Same, but with a budget surplus, we can't do that at all? There's not enough?
Right, right now, the first, the last, you have to budget, I looked at. Last budget I looked at. We were budgeting a surplus of sixty-eight thousand dollars. Okay, now, I got to figure out how I'm gonna fund a one-point-three million dollar. Uh, lift station improvement. Back into that budget. I don't quite, and it, I think I know how I'm gonna, we're gonna get it in there. We are not budgeting a big amount ahead. We're close to breaking.
Let me, let me think about this way, and I, listen, I appreciate it. If we didn't have so much water not used issues, then the, the, I mean. Would the situation be alleviated on the wholesaler because we're not needing more?
I don't think so.
Because we still have our loss.
It's, you know, everyone, everyone of the members of two-ton have, has unaccountable water loss. All we're, and everyone else is trying to figure out a way to mitigate it. And we're gonna attack it. We're attacking her. You know, it was. Eight years ago, we spent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on, we're gonna cut the end. Try to find water leaks, they found a bunch. They didn't find anywhere close to what we were losing. We do our very best. Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I, it's.
Darren, Misty, you got any questions?
No.
You guys got any more questions?
I don't have any questions, it's just I had a concern with huge water leaks and we need to get that addressed.
Sorry, what, Darren?
Wrong Darren.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash seven zero, City of Centertown, Arkansas. An ordinance updating the scheduled fees, deposits, and other cha- charges for the Centertown Water and Sewer Department and for other.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, sir.
Amy Roche.
Oh, I think we should try and mitigate it as much as possible.
Jonathan Cowherd.
No, same, same reason.
Keith Higgins Botham.
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
I'm voting yes. I understand we gotta have a balanced budget for the Water and Sewer Department. But I hate the idea that we gotta now raise rates because we've had these leaks for so long, should have been addressed sooner.
Right.
And Mr. Eland.
Yes.
Yeah, you got four to two, is that what?
I do.
Okay. Alright. And I'll see it when I. Alright. Well, now we'll go into resolutions that are zoomed in. Uh, this first resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-two. Uh, several months ago, I came back and I told the council, probably first part of the year, that we did receive a state aid grant for three hundred thousand dollars. To, uh, pay Motley Road, Tycoon Road, Dorsey Lee Road. And actually, we brought this back to the council, you know, been applying for this thing since two thousand nineteen. Uh, and we finally got it. This is just to let R. I. know we're willing to participate in this. We will have to match a few funds. Uh, they, the hundred, the three hundred thousand we got is a hundred percent. But after they put out for bid, they, they feel like it's probably gonna be about. Four hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy-five thousand. We have the funds to, to match it out of the street fund, so. Uh, and they are putting this project out for bid, uh, in January is the last I, I was told, so they'll get that started. So, any questions? Are you ready, counselor?
State aid city street program project resolution, resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash four-two. A resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Centertown to utilize state and street monies for the following city project.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance for resolu- or Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-two, sorry.
Well, moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Amy Roche.
Yes.
Justin Cowherd.
Yes.
Keith Higgins Botham.
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Aaron Warren.
Yes.
And Mr. Eland.
Yes.
Next is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-three. Uh, this is an agreement with CEI for survey services. For a public works storage facility, we plan on putting out at Highway two, right next to Animal Shelter. On Highway two seventy-nine and, uh. Alan's here, if, if you have any questions, but we, we do need to have survey services and then we'll have to take this to Benton County Planning for Approval, and that's also a budget. Building is budget next year. Any questions on this? Counselor.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash four-three, a resolution authorized the mayor and city clerk. As represented in Centertown, Arkansas, to enter into an agreement with CEI Engineering Associates Incorporated, Bentonville, Arkansas, for survey services for the City of Centertown, Arkansas.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-three.
Well, moved.
Now, motion, we got a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Amy Roche.
Yes.
Justin Cowherd. Keith Higgins Botham.
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Aaron Warren.
Yes.
And Mr. Eland.
Yes.
This last resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-four. Uh, this is just set in a public hearing to discuss the vacation and the drainage utility easement. Lot fifty-five at a Lane Bridge subdivision. Uh, which is nine oh one Maple Street here in Centertown. And we're, we'll set a public hearing, just like we had on our, with this one we did earlier today.
That would be December the twelfth.
December the twelfth, yes, is that in, I put that in there? I did, okay, make sure I know the right date. Any questions on that? Alright. Uh, counselors.
City of Centertown Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash four-four, a resolution saying a public hearing to discuss the vacation. Of a drainage and drainage easement located on Lot fifty-five of Lane Bridge subdivision, also known as nine oh one Maple Street, City of Centertown, Benton County, Arkansas.
I'm looking to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-four. You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Amy Roche.
Yes.
Justin Cowherd.
Yes.
Keith Higgins Botham.
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Aaron Warren.
Yes.
And Mr. Eland.
Yes.
Next is accepting the resignation of Angela Clark Chandler from the Centertown Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Uh, she has wrote, myself and Josh, a letter, expression of willingness to, to resign, and she has served for ten years. I do thank her for her service and, uh, anyway, she, she has decided to resign. Any questions?
Sounds like she's gone on some fun tour.
Yeah, yes, in Branson or something, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Angela's resignation.
I'm on it.
Motion, we have a second?
Again.
All in favor?
Alright.
Second, was that Keith?
Yes, Keith. Okay, all in favor, I'm sorry. Alright.
Alright.
Maybe I'll have eyes, okay. Alright, last thing I have is.
Sorry, are you telling that? I'm telling it?
Yes, yeah, they did tell me, and they're gonna get, they're gonna give me an update application, we're gonna post it online. I'll bring, I'll bring, I will, we'll bring the recommendation back either December again. Alright, last thing I got is, uh. Approval of the human resources policy changes. We did discuss this last month, uh, in, in detail. We were directed to work out or, or have Brian, and he's looked at them, we were also directed to have him look at the, the drug testing policy, which. Uh, Jocelyn and Brian did work it out, and Brian is satisfied with, uh, with, with the updated policy. And then the oil yard policy, we did add a policy, uh, to pay the. What are we calling it again? The pay. Longevity pay. We, we have a policy in there just to match what we approve.
Yes.
Just so we have a policy in there for it. And outside, does anybody have any questions on those policies? Someone like to make a motion to adopt the policies as presented?
Moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Ah, pizza too.
All in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Anybody have any other business?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Oh.
We have a update on Chamber Commerce.
That'd be Josie.
As a matter of fact, we had a meeting last night and we are taking applications. If you know anybody that's interested, let me know.
Wait, applications for?
We're joining the chamber.
Okay.
Be a chamber member.
Like, um, a business?
Yes, a business. We've already, we actually had somebody sign up last night right after our meeting. We have a website, it's pretty rough, though. We took pictures when we posted that, but we're still working through that side, but.
Um. And then hap- is. I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman's name.
Come on, okay. Come on, maybe.
Okay, is he working to look at? Businesses to come to Centertown, like?
We're not, we are not, yeah, we're not to that stage yet.
Okay.
We're to the stage of getting the local businesses here.
Gotcha.
On board, figuring out what are, what events we're gonna have, we're gonna get that's gonna start January, we're gonna start working on it. Uh, felt like it was just too close to the end of the year to get, get that started.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, we've been meeting like every two weeks. It's been moving on really well.
How long are the meetings?
Uh, like an hour and a half.
Is it like virtual or in person?
Nope, in person.
Cool.
Yeah, got a logo.
What do you think will be there to where we can talk about recruiting businesses?
Well, we're recruiting businesses now.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought you said. Well, we, no, I'm, I'm sorry, we, we are recruiting business from a membership standpoint, but not from a new business.
I mean, yeah, like new business to Centertown.
You think we'll, like, when do you think that we'll be ready to, like, recruit for that?
I think like six months.
As we turn the year, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think as we turn the year.
Okay.
Anything else? I got three questions, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go last, because I always. Out of turn. Darren, Misty, do you all have anything? Darren, Misty, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Other than getting old and forgetful and confusing meeting dates, uh yeah, I'm good.
So the coming goes killed at this point, is that land for sale?
I have not been advised of that, I didn't see any signs.
Okay, I heard, are you serious?
We got an email said it didn't fit in their business model, they changed owners.
Yeah, come and go did, I knew that.
Sold a bunch of stores in Colorado, I I sold like eighty-three stores.
So that, yeah.
We don't know, I haven't seen no sign on the property that.
Well, I mean, it 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 doesn't, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it's a great idea to bring some solutions or ideas to the community of what we can do with that land and partner, just thoughts. Strip Center over there behind Sherman Williams, is that like, is that good to go?
Oh, yeah, it's been.
Is that guy asking astronomical rates?
Yeah, so I'm present in real estate business and their company's been looking for an office and it's four grand a month.
Four thousand dollars.
In our understanding, there was people, there was things that were gonna go in there.
Yeah.
And they ended up not going in.
Are they just gonna sit and leave money?
Three years? I understand it's been three years, that's exactly what I thought, Amy. Exactly.
Well, there was some problems with getting it up to pass. Took a long time to.
Sort of minds been trying to get other businesses in there, and they're just like.
I know the real estate lady, and I've been sending people her way when they contact us.
It's not the same person on the landing or whatever, or the.
Okay, good.
There you go.
Good. Oh, Rob, we know.
Like, something like.
Something's coming.
It's it's what?
Service.
Medical clinic. Why not, let's let's, last thing. Do we have any updates on any of the litigations that we've had over the last year? So I know we have a couple cases that were ongoing, one was I think being.
Shiva Mitchell?
No, the the. The money that had disappeared last year, like the litigation, like is that still open? Like, what's the deal with the money that we lost? I know that we were talking about mental incompetence or something, something was being pursued, like any updates that we can share?
I can answer that, it's it's still open and uh it looks like it's set to go back to court in March of next year. Of twenty-four. I looked on Court Connect not long ago and it shows that. He came back in October and then the judge uh.
That, so that mental vaca came, I I.
Yeah, yeah, they, yeah, they came back and now he's. I don't know if it says that, it just says next hearing. March.
Is there anything legal that we can say, like, let's go to mediation? I mean, get something.
They are not a party to that. The state of Arkansas, that would be like asking your opinion on a murder case. Have any input, they they can come and ask us at some point if they ever get there, if we're interested in restitution. But but they have not gotten there, otherwise they would have reached out to us. But there's, there's nothing that we can do in this case, we're, because we're not a party to it.
I'll take that answer. Last one, City Hall, Old City Hall, and then the community center, anything updated there?
Alright, so in the new community center?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what what happens next is next month, we'll bring back the ordinance uh to take to the voters to extend the.
About March, right?
Yeah, it goes in March. So that that'll be updated, if it passes, then we'll we'll start the process. I've not done anything with the old city hall yet, depending on what happens with the community center. I want, I want to wait, because if we want to, if we're not gonna get, since it's about pass, we want to do something else.
That makes sense. I thought we were doing a library.
No.
Well, we talked about.
He does.
Oh, gotcha, yes, yes, yes. So we can only end.
Oh, that's all.
Because it's a.
Put so much in.
We can only remodel it.
And the value of us fixing the place didn't make sense. No further questions, Your Honor.
Okay, alright, hey, one one quick, quick. One question I have for you all. Uh there's a, there's a planning meeting on May twenty-first. Uh we have word.
Like Thanksgiving week?
Yeah, yeah, we always have a planning meeting. The developer asking for, and we haven't confirmed everything. I mean, that's for a special meeting uh as soon as we can get one to approve the final plan.
For noon on Thanksgiving Day.
Cowboys are playing, I don't want to watch them anyway, let's go.
So, I wanted you all to see if we're available on the twenty-second, which is the day after Wednesday.
Virtually?
Yeah, six o'clock, six P M. Six P M. And and I'll let you know right after the planning meeting, I'll send a message and maybe I'll text you all, or just to give you all access. You good, you said you're good, you good?
That'd be on the twenty-second.
You're good.
I I I'm gonna try.
I might not be good.
Twenty second, and I'll let you know for sure as soon as, as we get closer, because I'm I'm still working with, you know, the planning to make sure everything's good. Alright, so we got enough for court. Misty, were you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'd be a hundred percent true, and then the only thing I have is uh under announcements. We are gonna do our Christmas parade on Saturday, December ninth. Uh we're gonna move a little bit earlier. Well, could we do interfere with another city in the area? We don't interfere with them. Uh but but we.
We made traffic get congested.
But no, what 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 the goal is there is maybe the people can come to our parade and participate. And just make a left-hand turn and go right on to the neighboring city, because they have to line over there by four.
Yeah, if you need parking, park at the strip centers, there's no businesses.
Oh, we have one. Okay, alright, so was that something I can make a motion to a juror? You have a second? All in favor? Alright, thank you all.